Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council Meeting of August 9th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for participating in the civic process. We're glad that you've joined us today. We had the pleasure today of having Pastor Eric Van Shurel. He's the pastor of St. John's Lutheran Church. He's going to offer the invocation tonight. Pastor, thank you so much for your investment in education. I know that schools starting next week, and many in our community attend St. John's Lutheran School. Following the invocation, we had the pleasure tonight of having Nora El Karimi, who's a senior at Stockdale High. She's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Last month, just a few weeks ago, Nora was named Distinguished Young Woman of California. She represented Bakersfield in this state competition. But Distinguished Young Women is the largest and oldest scholarship program in the United States for high school girls, and she will be representing California in the Nationals coming up. She has a 4.43 GPA. She's a National Honor Society Junior Officer, member of the Math Honor Society, Jim Burke Educational Foundation Student Leader, a Four Dimension Dream Builder, class of 2024, and the principal dancer with the Bakersfield City Ballet. She's also the founder and executive director of Women in STEM Education, a local nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting and empowering young women to pursue careers in STEM. She plans to attend Stanford and major in bioengineering. No doubt that she's going to do very, very well. Pastor, would you please lead us and ask everybody to stand at this time?
Thank you. Nora has a lot longer resume than me and probably just about everybody else in this room also. That's amazing.
Yes, indeed.
We, I just looked at my calendar, and my family has lived in this community for nine years exactly for the day, and it has been a great place to raise our family. In worship on Sunday morning, just about every Sunday, we pray for you, whether you know it or not. We hope you feel those prayers. So we're just doing this in a different location tonight, getting to pray for you directly. So let's bow our heads. Almighty God, we thank you. We thank you for the city of Bakersfield. We thank you for her leaders. We pray that you would open our eyes to those things that are good and right for this community. Make this a city built on a firm foundation with faithful people, faithful families as building blocks. And especially today and this week, we pray for our area schools and teachers, some of which started today, some of which will start in the coming days. We pray for wisdom and for discernment tonight, for the courage to do hard but right things. And above all, we look to you for grace, grace in providing for all that we need in this life. Lord, bless our local economy. Bless our fields in both agriculture and energy. Continue to grant us water in our lakes, in our rivers, in our canals. Lord, we trust ourselves for your care into your hands, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Nora.
Before we begin, I'd like to say thank you for inviting me. It's such a pleasure to be here. Now, if everyone would join me in saluting our wonderful nation. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And you may be seated, Nora, if you would just stay there for a minute. Nora, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the council, the citizens of Bakersfield, to present you with the Mayor's Medal. This is California's Distinguished Young Women, women who will be representing us, California, our state, in Mobile, Alabama, in the national competitions. Thank you so much, and congratulations on all your other achievements.
Congratulations. And, Mom?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Nud. I just wanted to wish you the very best. As a fellow alumni of Four Dimension Dream Builders, your name truly, you are radiant, just like your name, Nud. So thank you for representing our city, and I wish you the very best.
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by the resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Behavior that disrupts this meeting includes repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Scott Tigerson, CEO of Kern Medical, Martha Leon, Executive Director of Kern Medical Foundation, and Rob Purdy, Patient and Program Development Coordinator for the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical, declaring Valley Fever Awareness Month during August 2023.
Well, good evening, colleagues. Kern County has been ranked as having the highest number of cases of Valley Fever since 2019, and we know that the summer months following the wet winters, like the ones that we just had, are associated with a very high incidence of Valley Fever. In the absence of a vaccine or a cure, awareness continues to be our excellent weapon to reduce the impact of our community, to our community, sorry. We are so fortunate that in our community, we have Kern Medical and the Valley Fever Center there, and we have these wonderful leaders that are making so much of a difference. Tonight, I'm joined by Scott Tigerson, the CEO of Kern Medical, Martha Leon, Executive Director of the Kern Medical Foundation, and Rob Purdy, Patient and Program Development Coordinator of the Valley Fever Institute. And it's my honor to present this proclamation. Whereas Valley Fever is a progressive, multi-symptomatic respiratory infection and debilitating disease caused by fungal spores that exist in the soil, and whereas Valley Fever attacks the respiratory system, causing infections that lead to symptoms resembling many common infections, including cough, fever, or fatigue, and whereas the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical is committed to increasing awareness and education for the public, patients, and healthcare providers, and whereas it is vital that residents and visitors alike are aware of the existence and symptoms of Valley Fever, so that if an infection is contracted, early treatment may be administered, and whereas the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical also remains dedicated to magnifying this growing epidemic, educating the public on the importance of early diagnosis, and meeting the need for clinical care and research by healthcare professionals. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim August 20th, August 2023, as Valley Fever Awareness Month in our city, and urge all residents to be educated and aware of the threat that Valley Fever poses, and lend support to finding a cure for this potentially deadly disease. It's my honor to present this to you, Scott, on behalf of all of us from the City of Bakersfield. Thank you again for your investment.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, your council. I'll start out by asking a couple of questions. Who knows somebody who has had Valley Fever? Now for a really, really hard question. Who knows someone who has died from Valley Fever? So it's a devastating disease. It can run the gamut of those of us that would probably test positive because we lived here long enough and you had no idea, to that other extreme. So as Kern County's safety net hospital, its teaching hospital, its trauma and specialty center, we see the worst of all the cases of Valley Fever. The complications we see, but the treatment options that we have available that frankly aren't available except in other large academic training institutions located outside the We started our teaching program for infectious disease fellows to add more physicians to treat this disease. So when one becomes a physician, you go to college, you go to medical school, you then have to go through a residency in whatever specialty you're going to be in, and then if you're going to do additional subspecialty work, like become an infectious disease physician that can treat Valley Fever, you then go on for additional fellowship training for one to three years. That's a lot of training to become a doctor. So we started our infectious disease fellowship for that very native. You name most physician specialties in this Central Valley in our community. We're short not just by one or two doctors, but by a lot of doctors. So being a teaching hospital, where we have about 108 residents and fellows up there every year going through training, another 125 medical students running around doing their third and fourth year rotations, that teaching program is very, very important for having physicians come to this community and learn how to treat diseases like this. Our first resident graduated this year and has joined our faculty. Our faculty are the ones who write the book chapters in medical books about what is Valley Fever, and how do you diagnose it, and how do you treat it. Unfortunately, the Central Valley is the epicenter of Valley Fever. So the mission of the Valley Fever Institute is to teach and educate, conduct outreach, conduct research, so that we can better identify and diagnose, and eventually treat and cure this terrible disease.
Thank you again, members of the City Council, Mayor Go, for this awareness proclamation. My name is Rob Purdy. I'm the Patient and Program Development Coordinator for the Valley Fever Institute. But I'm also going to tell you about Scott's trick question. So now you've all met somebody that's a patient of Valley Fever, with Valley Fever. I was diagnosed with Valley Fever in 2012. The Valley Fever that I have left my lungs and made its way to my brain and caused meningitis. So fungal meningitis, when it's caused by Valley Fever, is different than other fungal meningitis in that it requires a lifetime of care. So I am dependent on the care provided to me by the doctors at the Valley Fever Institute for my life, and I'm very thankful to them for the work that they do and the options and knowledge that they have enabled me to return to a life where I was actually able to go back to work, interact with my family, and also be a part, be there for my family to watch my kids grow and recently get married and await, you know, hopefully next year my first grandchildren. But the Valley Fever Institute is the only patient care center that includes education and awareness in their mission. And not only that, but we're also the only Valley Fever center or academic or educational research center that includes the patient perspective. The Institute continues to lead awareness and education efforts for Valley Fever in California and really nationally as well, and we continue to conduct research that is focused on better outcomes for patients fighting Valley Fever. So the Valley Fever Institute is not a research institute that is doing microbiologic research where we're looking at infections through microscopes. We are interacting and improving the care provided to the patients in this community, and then the lessons that we learn, better caring for our patients, are used nationwide and globally to better care for patients with Valley Fever. And recently, the World Health Organization published its first list of fungal priority pathogens to identify fungal infections that created increasing threat worldwide, and Valley Fever was included on that list, even though Valley Fever is only found in the Western Hemisphere and predominantly in the southwestern United States and northern Mexico. But the impact that Valley Fever has is global, and our efforts are also global. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on tonight's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Statements regarding items not listed on the agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on tonight's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one public speaker card for items not listed on tonight's agenda. Our public speaker is Lisa Smith.
Thank you.
Before I, welcome. Before I begin officially speaking, I wanted to publicly thank you, Mayor Go, because I went to Jeff Flores's office a couple of weeks ago. They contacted you. Somebody jumped into action, and we had two student walkways for Munsey School cleared of graffiti that I've been trying to do for months. I don't know what you did. I'm thankful that you did it, and I wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. This is a team effort, so I'm sure staff followed up with that.
I don't know who did what, but bless you.
Thank you to everybody involved.
I was here tonight on two issues, and one of them has to do with canal fencing of the Stein-Stockdale area. I've talked to Matt Column, who's been helping me on this. Thank you so much to the city attorney's office. It's being handled. We don't need to talk about it. How about that? One already handled. The other one has to do with something else that I want to share. I like it when it's handled. Okay, so I live off of McDonald's between Stockdale and Bell Terrace. Okay? Gang tagging is a problem in our neighborhood. Our most recent very active group is the Eastside Bakers 13 Nortaniel Lunatics, who in the past two weeks have tagged street signs, traffic signs, a church, a county building wall, a canal wall, sidewalks, two side yards from our residence. The entrance to Munsey School unfortunately has been done again, so I'm reporting that, and walls behind Outback Steakhouse. There's a block wall on the county property opposite of FedEx, which has been tagged by this group, and now another one. Although the tagging on the brick wall at FedEx was removed within 48 hours, this brick wall has been untouched since January. I reported it, then it was erroneously closed as county jurisdiction, reopened after I went to the city manager, reviewed for private property, and then confirmed as a public walkway and march, and nothing has happened since. They've also hit the K-rails on South Real Road in Stockdale. Although the city abated the graffiti on the overpass columns, the contractor hasn't touched the K-rails. Four shootings, two fatalities, one body dismemberment in an apartment bathtub. That's our crime statistics along McDonald Way. Four of those were handled by the police department.
Ms. Smith, your time is up.
Thank you.
Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
I would really like to get the K-rails taken care of by the contractor, since that is adding to our gang problem in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Vice Mayor.
I have pictures.
Go ahead and give those to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for your comments. Mr. Clegg, if we can work with our contractors and Mr. Straklous to address the K-rail issue, and then also regarding the graffiti abatement, my understanding is now with the contract with the county that we can provide those in corporate areas some support. And so if we can make a concerted effort to address that area proactively, I think that will help us address the issue in the short term. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Tamara Montana.
Hi. Thank you so much. And you guys will remember, Patty, that Jackie Sullivan sat on the city council here for 25 and a half years. She's got her fundraiser, annual fundraiser, that's happening this Friday, and she would love to be able to extend an invitation to everyone here to be able to attend. It's encouraging elected officials to vote yes to Having God We Trust displayed in all their city and county chambers in all of America. And here in Bakersfield was the very first one that she had started it here in God We Trust, and we're actually going to have a little video of her speaking with the In God We Trust here, and you guys had all voted in February 20th of 2002 to have In God We Trust displayed, and we've got a wonderful agenda in the future of visiting all these different expos in the National Association of Counties and Cities. And already, we've been to Austin, Texas, and we've had several of those elected officials write us back saying they've already voted from the resolution samples we've given them, and they've commissioned their county to come in and display, and paint a mural on their wall in God We Trust. So it's just a beautiful fundraiser. This was so much a part of Jackie's life. She's going to be 84 this year, and I know that it would mean the world to her to just know that all of you guys were invited to come this Friday. It starts at 5:30 at the Marriott, and I have invitations for everybody. If I could just leave them here for you, that'd be awesome.
Thank you. Give those to the city clerk, please.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A. Six appointments, mayoral, regular, and alternate member, Ward 1 regular member, Ward 4 alternate member, and Ward 5 regular and alternate member to the youth commission.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots are required. I'll share my nomination for the mayor, regular, and alternate youth commission members, and then I'll call on Councilmember Arias for his Ward 1 regular member nomination, and as Councilmember Freeman is absent tonight, I'll call on Councilmember Gray, who will provide Councilmember Freeman's Ward 5 regular and alternate youth commission member nominations. I am pleased to nominate Harjisel Brar as my regular appointee. He's a senior at Stockdale High School with a 4.5 GPA, a current member of Forensic Speech and Debate Team. For three years in a row, Harjisel has been a Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair finalist. It's pretty remarkable, and an Eagle Scout. And then for my alternate, Braden Mendaborough, who's a junior at Liberty High with a 4.3 GPA, junior class president, and on the Liberty Aquatics team, he's a lead prosecuting attorney for the mock trial team, which placed second in Kern County and a member of the debate team. Those are my nominations, and now I will call on Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, it is my honor to nominate Ms. Natalie Tarango. She is a proud, a proud student leader over at Golden Valley High School and a member of the Greenfield Walking Group.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias, and Councilmember Gray, for Councilmember Freeman.
Member Freeman, to nominate for youth commission, regular, Tanvi Talapali. She, Ms. Talapali, is a 10th grade student at Stockdale High School, earning a 4.0 GPA. She's been recognized as a scholar athlete. She's earned her Girls 14 Championship in tennis at the Seven Oaks Club. She won first place in the Kern Region Forensic League Debate. She is involved in Toastmasters and helps her other peers to conquer their fears of public speaking. She is also a writer and photographer for the school newspaper, and obviously with all this activity, she's an excellent time manager. She has a deep passion for volunteer work and would like to use her position on the youth commission to address issues such as youth mental health, civic engagement, youth safety, and community youth programs. On behalf of Councilmember Freeman, I'd also like to nominate Mr. Jimmy Yum for alternate youth commission. Mr. Yum is a 12th grade student at Liberty High School, earning up to a 4.33 GPA. He is the current ASB president of a senior class, a member of the National Honor Society, National Math Honor Society, and National Science Honor Society. During the summer, he has been involved, excuse me, involved with summer league basketball and is taking government classes at BC. He's also working as an apprentice with his dad, and he says that one of his greatest strengths is time management and likes to challenge himself to excel in all areas. He's very passionate about solving the homeless issue and helping others.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve all appointments.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you, and congratulations to the youth, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6B. Appointment of one alternate member, Ward 5, to complete an unexpired term which will expire December 2024, to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, due to the resignation of Steve Esselman.
Thank you.
One application for appointment has been received from Yaya Kazee.
Thank you. This appointment is also by ward, therefore no ballots are required. Again, Councilmember Freeman is absent tonight, therefore I'm going to call on Councilmember Gray, who will provide his alternate committee member nomination.
So on behalf of Councilmember Freeman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Yaya Kazee for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, alternate. Mr. Kazee was born in Bakersfield, has a deep interest in the beautification of Bakersfield. He has participated in the Great American Cleanup in 2022 and 2023, and while it pains him to see the litter on our streets, parks, and rivers all around the city, he feels that this appointment would be the perfect opportunity to help participate in the solution.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve the nomination.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Mr. Kazee. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7AS. A staff memorandum has been provided, transmitting BCSD approval of the agreement for item 7J.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any member of the council wish to pull the, pull any item for separate consideration, aside from Councilmember Weir? Seeing none. Does any member wish to recuse themselves from any item, aside from myself? Seeing none. I will recuse myself from item 7AA tonight, and we will pull for separate consideration items 7AI, items 7AK, 7AL, and 7AM. So with the exception of those items, including 7AA, I move adoption of the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
parks, and rivers all around the city, he feels that this appointment would be the perfect opportunity to help participate in the solution.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve the nomination.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Mr. Kazee. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7AS. A staff memorandum has been provided, transmitting BCSD approval of the agreement for Item 7J.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any member of the council wish to pull any item for separate consideration, aside from Councilmember Weir? Seeing none. Does any member wish to recuse themselves from any item, aside from myself? Seeing none. I will recuse myself from Item 7AA tonight, and we will pull for separate consideration Items 7AI, Items 7AK, 7AL, and 7AM. So, with the exception of those items, including 7AA, I move adoption of the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Smith, if you could make a motion on 7AA, please.
Thank you. Yes, I will move to approve Item AA.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Gonzalez abstaining, and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Weir. 7AI.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, for the last, I don't know how many years, at least a decade, the city has been engaged on street improvement and building roads and making our travel and getting from here to there much easier. 7AI is to slow down the traffic. It seems very counterproductive, and personally, I don't think there's any benefit to this. So, I'm not going to vote for that, and I expect that our vice mayor will make a motion.
Thank you, Councilman Weir. May I, Mayor? Councilman Weir, thank you so much. Yes, I will make the motion for 7AI, and I will say that it will improve mobility for those who depend on bicycle as a way for transportation, those who are pedestrians and walking within the neighborhood. And this is an area of East Bakersfield that I actually represent, and I can tell you there is a high concentration of individuals who walk and bicycle to work and to school and to the market and who require public transportation to get to and from many places, including the aforementioned destinations and the doctor, and I can continue to list off many different life activities that folks need to engage in and require multiple modes of transportation aside from a vehicle. And so I think this actually enhances mobility for those individuals, and it enhances safety. And so, yes, I will make a motion to approve 7AI.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and we have a request to speak from Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say that slowing traffic reduces deaths, reduces injuries. We have seen great increases in fatalities and increases in injuries in the city of Bakersfield, and we need to do something different. We are at about 60 fatalities per year, and we're on track to exceed that this year. We're about 2,000 injuries per year from automobiles, and we're on track to beat that again. We have many more deaths from automobile accidents, collisions, than what we do from homicides and guns. We need to stop the killing on our streets, and slowing traffic will help do that. So, I am for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmembers Weir and Gray voting no, and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Weir, 7AK.
Thank you, Mayor. If you don't mind, I will take the next three at one time, because they're all regarding one subject. So generally, when we have bids and they go out, and they're approved, and if something happens that we weren't expecting, there's a change order. And most of the time, and almost all the time, we approve those change orders, and that's fine. And I particularly, I'm sure my other colleagues do too, pay attention to those change orders. And they give us good information about the project and where we're going, and an opportunity to ask questions. These three items, the project, one project's $2.4 million, another one's $2.1 million, the other one's $3.1 million. But they have built in a city-controlled contingency for unforeseen conditions. $150,000, $110,000, $200,000. I personally am not in favor of doing this way if we need to get change orders, if we need to change anything. It should go through the process. And in the way it's set up right now, if we go through this and we don't use, let's say we have a cost overrun and we end up using $100,000 of the $150,000 for the first one, we're never going to know that. So, I want to see, personally, I want to see the costs, and I want to see if there's an overrun or if there's a change order. And so for these, for these three items, I would move approval of the actual job, but I would not approve the staff contingency that's set aside for these three items. So, I make a motion to approve them without the contingencies.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've seen this quite a bit recently on contracts. Would staff explain? Is this a new procedure, or what are we doing?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith. Happy to provide some context, and I'll ask Greg Straklos from Public Works to also provide his feedback. As we've been looking at the pretty big list of capital projects that we have in front of us, and I believe with some council encouragement to try and find efficiencies to move a little bit quicker and get these projects out and completed a little bit faster, one of the things that we noted is that we're regularly having 30- or 60-day delays to finalize projects when we have those change orders, you know, towards the end of projects. And I think in a normal circumstance, best practice is, you know, you don't want to see a change order that's, you know, above 10%, hopefully 5%. And so what we're hoping to do is just creating some different procurement approaches that help us move a little bit more quickly, but still within parameters that are reasonable. And so, you know, you look at the percent on these contingencies, they're pretty low percentages. And so if you saw a bigger change order, that would come back to council, but those that are within the industry standard of that 5%, then we don't increase the time and delay of delivering these projects, and we're, you know, keeping a very close eye on those. I think another alternative could be to produce regular reports to council of where we do have expenditures into those contingencies. But just, that was one of our efforts to try and just move capital projects a little bit faster, but again, within a parameter that's transparent to the council and within a pretty reasonable contingency amount. The bigger ones, obviously, you don't need to come back and have more full explanation. Would you add anything, Mr. Straklos?
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. The only thing I would add is that during the construction project, things tend to move rather quickly, and we don't want to stall the contractor for sake of work that needs to be done in the field and a change order associated with that work. And getting back to council through that process, holding up that portion of the work until such time we get approval for the authorization to pay that change order. So, this contingency allows us to make quick decisions in the field, allow the construction to continue to move forward, and deliver the project on time.
Thank you. That makes sense to me, and I think we want to move projects as fast as we can. And so I will make the motion to approve the three items per staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Weir, were you trying to press again? Your button? Did you want to speak again? I saw you trying to press your button. Oh, okay. So, we will take the second motion first, as is our process. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. This is on staff's recommendation. Vice Mayor.
I know this is a little out of order, but if I can just make a referral and request that staff provide a report on all of those items that were paid. Thank you.
Motion is approved, with Councilmembers Weir and Gray voting no, and Councilmember Freeman absent.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Colleagues, at this point, unless somebody is slow to press their button... Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request a report. It doesn't have to be here tomorrow, but the next day would be good. I would like to know how much we have spent out of our funding on homeless since measuring came into existence. So, that's '18? Is it '18 that that happened?
It was passed in '18, but the first revenue proceeds were received in '19.
Okay, since, so from '19 up to maybe June 30th that just passed. In addition to that, you know, if we could break it into categories, and I mean, it doesn't have to be 200 pages, but if we could break it into categories that make sense, that would be appreciated. Next to that, I would like to see how much money has been invested in this that was not our money, that we got grants, we got whatever. So, I think that would shed some light on a lot of things, and I think it would provide some good information for the council. And I appreciate it if you could do that. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. I don't see any other requests. Our youth are here tonight. Thank you. We really appreciate your engaging in this process and welcome, and we hope that you come back again. With that, we stand adjourned at 6:02.